Okay. It's past seven o'clock, so we'll now call the meeting to order. This is the, the whole Public Works Environmental Services and Facilities Meeting of Monday, May the sixteenth, twenty. Now, in council chambers, we have advisory members, Mr. Bush and Mr. Packwood. At the council table, we have Councilor Billbaugh, Deputy Mayor Dacia, Mayor Sale, Councilor Hunter from staff, we have Mr. Spencer, we have our CIO, Mr. Grant, we have our clerk Rebecca Williams, and we have our deputy clerk Candace Newcomb, and we also have Director of Operations, Mr. Gordon Shaw. With that, we will, we will get, get on with it, and I would like to get an approval of the agenda, please. Can I have a move? Councilor Hunter, thank you, and Secretary Deputy Mayor Dacia, thank you. Item number three, which is disclosure of the curiary interest and the general nature thereof.
And the main disclosure.
Hearing them, thank you. Business arising from the previous committee of the whole meeting, which would be dated the April the eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and in your packages, it's on pages one through eight. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Couple of questions, Mr. Chairman, sir. On page four of fifty-one, where we talked about the volunteer firefighter insurance. I, I had asked if the coverage was a T-four benefit, and the minutes don't reflect the answer to that question, and I, for the life of me, can't remember what the answer was. I would like to have an answer to that question in the record, if possible. Is it, is that insurance a T-four benefit? That's the first question. The second question comes in under page five of fifty-one, when we're talking about the Honeywell field installer and the server upgrade, and we made arrangements to finance that, depending on whether or not it arrived in the twenty twenty-two calendar fiscal year or not. So my question is to follow up through the chair. Is, do we have any better idea of when the system is expected to arrive? And the second part of the question, can we get regular updates so that we follow this, this project through on a meeting-by-meeting basis and know where it's at at each meeting? Those are my two questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with respect to page four of five, with the volunteer firefighter insurance, is a, is not a T-four benefit? And with respect to the Honeywell field installer service upgrade, we do not have any better indication of, of arrival time?
Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
We can get a report in the next meeting, maybe.
Thank you. Okay, I'm hearing, I'm hearing no one else with, with questions. I have, I, I myself have one. Regarding the, on page two of fifty-one, the Fort Town Night Run, have we been advised of any outcome of, of the success or failure of the Fort Town Night Run?
So through the, through the chair, I certainly have not received any complaints regarding the, the run, but unknown at this stage how many participants or how successful it was.
Thank you so much, and one other question, and it's on page three of fifty-one regarding members discuss the fire department recruits, that it started in January twenty twenty-one and completed their probationary period. Is the, my question is, is the probation period a full year?
Through, through, through the chair, it would be a full year. I suppose in a special circumstance, it may extend a little bit longer than a year, but typically, it's a one-year period.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. CIO. All right, we're going to move on now to the next item on the list, which is now the delegation by Mr. Mallon, and it's regarding a road closure. Mr. Mallon, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, everyone, for having me here.
And just before, just before you begin, we are, we are running quite late tonight, so I will invite you to.
Two thousand twelve, I moved a twenty fourteen county road. The house from the previous owner, it was eighty-four, and before that, the house was done in sixty-eight. There's a, a building at the property that encroaches on the township road. And it's, I figure it's about two and a half feet or so, maybe three feet. Also, the septic, the weeping tiles are encroaching on that road. No one told me about it when I bought the house. They told me that that was ours, actually, and obviously it's not. A year and a half ago, I got a survey done, it cost thirteen thousand dollars, just to make sure what is what on the box. We found out people moved pins in the back, and it was a nightmare. But sure enough, on the, on the actual survey, you can clearly see that the road goes all into the back building. I'm just wondering how, whether you ever seen this. I need that little parcel road to get some propane delivered at that building for this. I also need another road to empty the septic system from the house. And of course, I keep this open in the winter time with my little tractor for, as a fire route, right? Just a piece of fire starts at the back. And for that, I contacted my attorney-in-law for that, and he said that he suggests that we make an offer to purchase a part of the road to fix the encroachment, and at the same time, it's going to give us a buffer zone between our property and the lot next to us, which is industrial. From what I understand, the trees are going to be removed, and that means our nice backyard, now we're going to see new fracking lots and heavy equipment. That's not going to be pleasant. So by buying a perfect road, if we can, we get to remain somewhere in trees to hide that. We get to maintain the fire route that we need to go to the back building. We still need, we need to get the truck to go deliver propane in the winter time for the furnace in there, and also to empty the septic system from the house. It's only way to access. If this is removed, and we have to move that part or the two-story building that we have, there's no way to access the back part whatsoever. It's a fire at the back, for example, or take it even to the propane tank, there's no way to get there at all without the vehicles running over the, the septic system, the weeping tiles. So at first, when we first bought the house, we were told that little section was outside, obviously it's not. So we need to buy a road if we can, or a section of it up to, I think it's Third Avenue, that I own land over at the back, and that way it'll put a buffer zone between our property, and we'll be able to keep some of the trees to hide heavy equipment that's going to be there one day, I guess, and so we need to make, if we could, purchase the, the part of the road.
Okay, Mr. Mallon, we do have this coming up later on in the, in the meeting. There, there is a recommendation for road allowance closure, so we will be discussing that shortly down the road here tonight.
Okay, can I ask a question?
A question, go ahead, yes.
So, just so that I'm correct, Mr. Mallon, the, the ask, so in our package on page twenty-one of fifty-one, the highlighted area ends, ends at Second Street. And if I'm not mistaken, you just asked for us to go all the way to Third Street, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, it would, it would have a buffer zone, basically. I, I guess the road is sixty-six feet wide. Most roads are, I think, sixty to sixty-six. We, we, we would be able to keep the trees to hide all of, you know, the, the.
So from front property line out back to Third Street. As in, from, from the front property line back?
Yes.
Back to Third Street, not to Second Street.
If we have to buy all the wood to four-one, we would, but obviously it's something required.
So just, just for clarification, it shows here on the map that we have that your property only goes as far as Second Street.
I just want to make sure that we have.
So I want to make sure that, that too.
Doesn't show.
Doesn't show.
The other one shows that it's First and Second, but that's what he has highlighted.
Yeah, it says there.
What he said.
But we don't know if that's Third Street.
We just.
Twenty-one.
So if we gave it all the way to Third, yes, it's.
It's up to the Third, Third Avenue. So the, the, the orange line on page twenty-one of fifty-one?
Yes.
Should have, should have extended to Third Street.
Yes, it is.
Just wanted to be clear because it says Third Street, but then.
Yes.
The diagram would only went to Second Street.
The second street, north of Second Street, there's one parcel that's two acres, actually, and it ends at the end of Rochelle, I guess. And we would need it just from there, it's just not that buffer zone between the industrial park and.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mallon.
Thank you very much for having me.
We will be discussing this shortly in the, in the program.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, thank you, and we're now moving on to our discussion items, and we're at item six A, which is the River Route Operating Agreement. In your packages, it's, it's an information item, and it is on pages nine to through seventeen. And Mr. CIO, are you going to highlight this for us?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, the draft partnership agreement is being presented. Going to say it at least in Prescott and Hattersford Cardinal tonight, I think it may be presented Rockville as well this evening, and then we'll be going to Augusta on Tuesday, the fourth. At this stage, it's just a draft looking for, for, for committee feedback and comment on the, on the agreement. And once we, once we've sort of gathered the, the comments and feedback, the, the, the committee will look at updating and finalizing the sort of the final draft to, to formally come to the committees and council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. CIO. I'll open the floor up now for discussion. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, moving to page thirteen fifty-one, which would be item number ten, which is the bus. So in, in the agreement, as it is now, Rockville provides the bus, provides the driver, that's their contribution to this, and the three municipalities pay, pay the cost. I have a little, little issue with this, because it certainly doesn't list a replacement date for, for the bus. It just says that in the future that we would, we would incur that capital bus replacement cost. So it doesn't say whether it's one year, five years, or there's no anticipation, just that when it, when it happens, we would, we would have to realize that, that cost. And it doesn't, there's no dollar values. We're signing on something that's blank there as well, and it doesn't suggest, I mean, part of the agreement now is that Rockville provides the service, they're providing the bus and the driver. So once this happens, they'll no longer be providing the bus, we'll be providing the bus. So what mechanism will there be then to change this, this contract so that it reflects that Rockville's not providing the bus anymore, that that we're paying for the bus? That shouldn't they start to incur some cost at that point as well?
So. So through the, through, through, through the chair, with respect to that, as, as we foresee it in the next two, two to three years at least, is that Rockville is going through a process of replacing each of their buses, and they, I believe it is a three bus a year, and the, each, each year that, that a new bus comes in, that bus that they're placing out of their, out of service would move into the river and transit route for that year. So it would be anticipated that it would be roughly a three to four-year period before there may be a requirement for a, a new bus, like a new capital purchase of a bus. With respect to that, there, there is stipulation in there that before sort of proceeding with that capital asset, it would require the approval of, of each municipality. And it wouldn't just be sort of strung on, and there is the option within this agreement that each year it's sort of a renewal, that you would continue on with the, being a partner in that river. So there are, there is some flexibility and options available.
Question answered, Deputy Chair?
Yeah, I have more, but somebody else can go ahead if they want.
Okay, so I just have some questions with regard to page eleven of fifty-one, where we talk about the service provider. The city of Rockville shall act as the service provider for the river route transit service. The responsibilities include the following, and as I go down the bullet points, track, daily ridership data. I would like to see that, that bullet point expanded so that it pro, so that they provide that data to the partners on a monthly basis, on a, on a run, on a ridership by run and by day. So it's, it's just bothering me every time I see that bus, there's nobody on it, and I would like to see the ridership by, by run and by day, and I'd like to get that report every month, and I notice we have this in front of us, and I'm just wondering through the chair, when we can expect the next report on ridership?
So through the, through, through the chair, certainly the, the hope is that we will have an update on, on ridership next month.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and just continuing on a little bit, I noticed that at some point in here, I can't remember just exactly where it was, but I did see a comment about. I can't remember where it was, I won't bother you wasting time here tonight, but there was a comment about assessing the usage on a, on a assessing the uses on a regular basis, or at least we have that option. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Councilor Hunter.
Through the chair. Rockville's going to provide the maintenance and service on, on this, the run, I assume we're being billed for the time and stuff we spent on here, have we got a price of how much per hour they're charging for their mechanics and stuff to work on, on this? What we're being charged for this? On the, should be a set, set fee of what the, what charges?
So, so yeah, through the, through, through the chair, part, part of that would, would be incorporated into that annual budget with, with the estimates on how much they're anticipating for, uh, maintenance and repairs, so that, so that would be provided in advance on continuing for the, for that upcoming year.
I guess they're going to provide that, or just, I'd like to, I think we should be told, told there on, on that, what, what hourly rate they're going to charge for their mechanics. Oil parts and stuff, I was going to be a quote. I think it should know the fixture and what we're, we're built, we build out for the mechanics.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. CIO. Just, I just want to finish. Yeah, Councilor Billbaugh, did you have any questions?
Oh, yes, just one. Page thirteen of fifty-one, number nine, when is this going to take effect, I guess, is my main question. Of, is it from April first to March thirty-first?
So through the, through the, through the chair, that, that is the typical renewal period. You look on page eleven of fifty-one.
Yeah.
Respect the renewal, it, it coincides with the provincial gas tax funding cycle.
But to follow up on that, so number nine, it states we're going to have two staff members on this operation. Here we are in the May, and we don't have two staff members. When are we going to get into sitting down for the hours of operation, route travel, stop location, et cetera, et cetera? And to help the mayor, right, with how come they're not running the bus from the season?
So through the, through, through the chair, with the last question, I, I can't comment on the whether anybody's on the bus or not.
No, no, I'm just saying.
But, 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 but I serve, so I, I can certainly say that throughout this process, from the operations side of it, that I have, I have been sitting on, on that operations committee. The community development coordinator has been sitting on the, on the marketing side, and I would certainly anticipate that when the transit service partnership agreement is passed by, by, by each of the municipalities, that it's unlikely that I will be remaining on that committee, and we will be having a member of the, of the Public Works join that committee.
Thank you. I would like to see a member from council on that committee as well. We can protect that back to.
Certainly take that.
To Mr. Shum. Each member. Each township has a fire support agent, each council.
Certainly take that comment back to the, to, to the committee. Feeling, the feeling was that annually councils would be approving the remaining in the, in the agreement, the annual budget in possession before they're making that decision, and that it would be a administrative staff function to carry that throughout the year.
Thank you. Mr. Packwood, any questions? And Mr. Bush?
No, I, I think everything's been touched on. There's a lot of unknowns, and I think it's been brought up by all the other council members.
Thank you. Just one quick, any, any follow-up comments?
I do. And going down to number, number eleven, and it's the continuous improvement comment, and that's probably what Mayor was referring to. And it's whether we see this as a service or, or a business. And I mean, I like the idea that, that continuing, continuous improvement results in decreasing the cost per ride. And ultimately, I don't think anybody at the table wants to have an open, open blank check to write at the end of the, at the end of each year for this. But you know, I, I want to recognize that I see it as a, as a service, not, not as a business. I mean, all transportation, public transportation certainly gets subsidized, subsidized to some extent. It's, it's a valuable service, and it's one that we, we certainly need, you know, to work on decreasing the cost per ride, like it says in the statement, but and, and it's a great thing to strive for, but, but I think ultimately, again, that it's going to come down to budget to whether or not we continue to, to support it. It's, I just want to say that, again, I, I don't see it as a business, I see it, see it as a service that we're, we're increasing the service level for, for the, for our municipalities and, and for our neighbors.
Anything else?
Probably have more, but. So I think one other thing that we've talked about as well is that in the past is that for this, it's a cooperative effort, that all parties do, do have to come to some form, form of, of an agreement. It's not going to be just us and Prescott if the best is out. And, and I, like, I'm not really sure that, is that directly reflected in there? In my end notes, I don't have that directly, directly noted in there, that it has to be an agreement between all of the four municipalities, or the city of Rockville and Prescott, and then the two municipalities. My other, only other, only other comment was, you know, about, again, about the max cost and blank, blank check, I'm not willing to give the blank check, so.
Mr. CIO, do you have anything to?
Through, through, through the chair, is it my understanding that having an annual budget presented in January, in advance of committing by the end of February, is insufficient in knowing the projected or estimated cost to operate that service in the upcoming year?
So as long as we will know whether qualified for, what funding we're qualified at that point, and that it, that it won't be after that, I mean, we kind of need to know the funding that we're going to get before we actually know the cost that we're committing to. So we're going to get gas, gas tax top-up like we did this year, to help, you know, keep it affordable. I think those things need to come before we actually sit down and, and try to hammer out exactly what the budget's going to be. Otherwise, I'm not going to be very accurate.
That's through, through the chair, the thought process would be, at least as, as this agreement is now, that the operations oversight committee have that annual budget prepared with respect to projected revenue and expenses to, 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 to bring to, to each committee and council by that time. So we would have an idea of what that, as the commitment would be for that upcoming year.
Mr. Mayor, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, well, the reason I have my hand up is because this agreement is going to op, is going to operate from April the first until March the thirty-first following. And we're going to get this budget in January. So we're already into a year, and we don't have any kind of expenses, revenue and expenses to date statement. So when this comes forward for signature, I would hope to see a revenue and expense statement to date or for the, whatever fiscal period we're going to be talking about, but if, if it's a, if it's an April to March fiscal period, then I would like to see the revenue and expense statement for the April to March period, that, you know, that, that we've already gone through. Now, we started late, I think it was in maybe May or June, it might have been March that we started, but we're in now in May, so how long have we been operating this service now? It's eight months or nine months, is it not?
Through the chair.
Through, through the chair, since the
August.
Pilot, since, since the pilot.
Well, no, because the revenue, the revenue struck, excuse me, the expenses started the day we started the process, started the pilot. So the pilot is, is part of the expense. So if I recall correctly, it was August the twenty-ninth or something of twenty twenty-one when we started. So we'll soon be finished, well, before May, we've got nine months in. So we've got, we've got expenses to date, and we've got revenue to date from August. And then the first full year that we will see, will, we will see, will be in the, for the period that goes from April one of twenty twenty-three to March of twenty twenty-four. So we should have the revenue and expenses complete to that point when we get our January budget. So all I'm saying is that I'd like to see a comparison between the budget and what, what is revenue and expenses we've actually realized. So the, so we've got two things side by side. Here's the budget, and here's what our, here's what our current to date. Here's what our current to date looks like. So, I mean, I, I gotta have something to anchor to, is, is that's all the point that I'm making.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I see no other questions, so I'm going to move on. And there's six A, B, and six C. Uh, there's nothing in your packages regarding this. This is something that I, I requested pretty much at the last minute to have put on the agenda. And the reason it was done that way is because at the admin finance meeting last, last week, we had a, two presentations. One from Hans Fireworks, and one regarding, from Mrs. Anderson regarding streetlights on, on Charlotte Street. Queen and, Queen and Charlotte, Charlotte Street, whatever it is. So I, I wanted this on the agenda so we could discuss this situation on both, both, both fronts to perhaps give staff some direction as to how to proceed. Or if staff has, has at this point in time, any, any reports regarding the two situations, we would like, like to hear that as well. So, and I apologize to Mr. Packwood and Mr. Bush, you know nothing about this. So because the presentation was made at the finance meeting. So this is pretty much for the members of council, and I will just start at Counselor, Counselor Hunter. And if you would like to make any suggestions or any comments regarding the two, the two topics.
I'd like to really much discuss on them until we get some more information, that staff had more time to research it. But done on, on road, over, as far as the lights and Queen and Charlotte have a, have a policy for button lights up, was implemented by a number of councils ago, and I think we got stuck to following that policy.
It's just I got the feeling from Mrs. Anderson, which she was, she was getting very frustrated with the, with the, with the process she had been through, our meetings many, many times over the last, I think, year, and so.
I think her policies always been the, streetlights are, are put on for, on intersections and residential areas, not on the area, so.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Mayor?
Well, I'll go last on this one.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so we're on, we're on six B, correct?
Six B or six C, you can, yeah, they, they both made presentations on the same, so you can do them both together.
If you, if you could, I would prefer if we stuck to like six B, and, and finish that up, so we're not I didn't think it'd be easier for the clerical deputy clerical person to, to keep track for, for minute taking.
Of course, my apology. All right, we're still on six B.
Okay, so, so with regard to that, I, I think with that, we have, we have, as a council and as a group, we have certainly heard citizen request for, for the streetlight. I think we've all voiced our support for, you know, staff to, to conduct themselves and do their job. And I, I think that it's, it's a staff job to decide, you know, where streetlights go, they have a streetlight budget, and I think we've, we've had the presentation, we've heard the, the resident concern, and I think that it's, it's a staff function, so.
No, you hit it right on the nose. We do have a budget. Do we, Chair, to the CEO, what, what is that budget, if we can?
Uh, through, through the chair, I, I don't, I don't have that off the top, I've already seen something with six or seven?
I think sixteen.
Through the CEO and the chair, seven thousand dollars.
I'm sorry?
Seven, sorry, seven thousand dollars.
Sixteen.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Yes, so, you know, we have a seven thousand dollar budget, and I could get staff to look at it. It's in our operation manager, and I hope she gets her lights, because it is very, very dark up there. I don't care, rural or whatever, it's a dark spot, it's been well-used by not only her, but other homes. I've walked in there at night, I've been up there, so.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Oh, I'm.
They weren't, they weren't here for the presentation.
Okay, so, just talking about. With, with respect to this.
Of course. The chair, I do have a comment. Go ahead. When we lived on County Road twenty-one, we made, and had a light put on our driveway. And that was ours, and it solved the problem. We paid bill, period.
Mr. Bush?
No, no, I don't have, sorry, I don't have a comment.
Okay, okay, to be fair, Mr. Packwood, we'll come back to you again.
I know, it was very good for service. We never had a bell bowl. They were good first, and it solved our problem.
Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Okay, so, just again on the Charlotte Street, number one, it's a number of years since we've put up some streetlights, but I, I mean, I can see a distinction here between Charlotte Street and County Road twenty-one, which is, as, it's a county road. Charlotte Street is in the hamlet of Johnstown, it's on one of the fringes of the, of the hamlet. We both realize, we all realize that, but there are about six or eight houses at the far end of that street, in the totally dark area. So I, I believe Mr. Grant indicated that this was on the work plan for Q two, second quarter. So I'd like to see a, a staff report here, and this is the first time I've had this, it, this concept of a policy has been brought up. I don't know where that, where that policy was first implemented, but I'd like to, to get a look at it, and make sure that that policy comes forward as part of the staff report. And I'm just hoping that, well, as, I mean, the Q two is going to end in June the thirtieth, so I'm hoping that we get the staff report prior to, in, in Q two, as Mr. Grant indicated. So I'll, I'll deal, I'll, I'll be looking forward to that.
Thank you. I see no follow-ups. Okay, we'll now move on to, to six C, which is the Hans, Hans Road Safety Concerns. And I'll start with Counselor Hunter.
Start me again, well, there, there's a, I think there's a, a way around, rounded, I think staff needs to look into it. Brought up on my presentation, we have other military bases that have explosive zones, have signage and lights and stuff about, I don't signify. And which, I think is something, can we work there a lot, I think, the recommendations of, of probably speed bumps or barbed it, areas to slow down the traffic coming by. It appeared to be from the presentation, but one of the main, their main concerns seem to be recreational vehicles that were traveling at high speeds up and down, the road to get down to access the railway line. I think that's under our jurisdiction, we get, we get permission for what those recreation vehicles can and travel on, maybe that's one road that they don't need to travel on, it's a very short, some of the road, and there's a lot of other for road access for four-wheelers and off-road access to get to that railway bed to travel, going down Hans Fireworks, so. And that's a road that shouldn't be recreational travel.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, do you want to go last again?
Yeah, please.
Deputy Mayor?
You know, I, I wish that members of the public were here tonight for, for this, you know, safety concerns discussion, and it concerns me that we had their presentation, and there seemed to be, you know, a good, a good number of folks in, in the gallery that night, and that there's, there's nobody here tonight, and I'm sure that, that that's who would want to be here for that discussion. Yeah, I think, I think I'd rather see what, what staff comes back with in, in terms of, of possible remedies for the safety concerns that, that were brought forward. And I think the one remedy that, that I heard that I want to go on the record of not really being supportive of is, is the closure and the gating of, of that road, reducing landowner, landowner rights. And, and further to that, that you know, however, HFI decides to negotiate with those landowners. You know that if that does happen, there has to be some form of a compensation package for those, those landowners to use, to lose access to their, to their so those are, I get that the discussions for safety concerns, I'd rather see what staff says for safety concerns, but those are, those are my.
Uh, just to, just to somewhat answer your, your question, your compensation. I do, I did notice that the night of the presentation, for quite some time, there was quite a bit of landowner and, and people discussing things in the back, so there may be something wrong most times.
Yeah, I just struggle, I just struggle with landowners using, losing rights to their.
Oh, absolutely. Council of Bill.
Uh, yes, I think, I think with the cooperation, CEO and staff operation manager maybe putting the signs up like they do have in, in, in Pedawa. Reducing the speed, I think is the biggest thing. If we can reduce the speed down there, put speed bumps on, hands on, hands road. I think you're going to solve your problem, I think. Counselor Hunter hit it right on the nose, they're more concerned the, the Director of Health and Safety is more concerned about those people, which are to me, the ATV four-wheelers. I understand that they had a discussion inside that, that the ATV club and HFI. And it seems pretty positive to do it together. And, and I think this, same with the management. So overall, I don't think it's a real, a, a big issue. I just said that we, you know, we, we're not going to close road, obviously, we'll make a road, we just don't do that. And I think with a little bit of, of work and ATV landowners, I think we can, that's a fine problem. Very easy.
Mr. Packwood?
Yeah, through the chair, I do have a couple of comments on that, but I've seen myself, but those people will live at the corner where hands comes out, and there's a, like, plain snail. I have seen shift workers come out of there, just flying right past that hedge, never stopped or nothing, just boom, boom, boom.
That shift worker is with HFI?
Yes, oh, I have seen that myself. And I have also seen the four-wheelers, and some of them are driving pretty darn fast. I just watch. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bush?
Yeah, I, I'd really rather not see that road closed, I think. Uh, it is accessible to a lot of different trails. Yes, you can get on the rail bed from four kilometers away, but if you're on a four wheeler, it's not really safe driving on road, the tires aren't, they're not DOT approved, then so it's, if they have access, quicker access there, safer access, not quicker than, and that's the way. Speed bumps might work, I'm not sure, they may try and do jumps on. But, but I mean, there, there's no way to keep them out, right? They'll just, they'll go, they'll go on someone's land to get by if they have to, a lot of them. So, not the ones in the club, but. Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, glad this is on the agenda, I was I'm happy to see it on the agenda because it, it is a major issue. I guess the first thing that I want to say is that how the township, the corporation, our corporation deals with this is a major import, not just to HFI. Department of National Defense is watching to see what support this company gets from this township. This company has worked very, very hard to become a direct supplier to Department of National Defense. But that status can change like that. And of course, naturally, Department of National Defense wants to know that there's rigorous standards put in place to ensure that there's no infringement either on their property or no danger to the public. So I'd have to look at it from that perspective, and the respective, I think, if I heard correctly, a hundred and thirty-five employees. So I regard this issue as having two components, a short-term component and a long-term component. Now, the short-term component, in my mind, consists of signage, a speed limit, and speed bumps or speed, or rubble strips. And, and first of all, the signage that we were referred to as having been in place in Gates Town is, is signage advising the traveling public that they're in an explosion zone. And I would like to see a staff bring forward immediately, if not sooner, proposals for signs and speed limits and speed bumps or speed rubble strips. Actually, I think rubble strips would be more, would be more successful. So I'd like to see that handled before well, I'm not going to put a time limit on, I'd just like to see a staff report on that quickly. Now, as far as the long term goes, I think we have to realize that something has to be done with that road, is, is, we don't maintain it past their, past the HFI gate. It's an unmaintained road allowance. We don't plow it, we don't maintain it, and as a matter of fact, recall that we did have a proposal from a tower company to build a tower down on a piece of property that was at the corner of the unopened Hans Road and the railway right of way. And we made it very clear to those tower operators that we were not going to maintain that road, and we were not going to upgrade the standards. And as a result of the position that we took on that, the tower is not going to be located in that location. So you have to be consistent here. We're not maintaining it past their gate. In my mind, there's no reason for it to be open past their gate. Provided that we can find a way to keep the landowners having access to their property. And when you consider there's only one or two landowners down there, I don't see any reason that 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 road can't be at some point stopped up and closed. It's, and, well, let me rephrase that, stopped up and closed to the public with the exception of landowners who require access to their land. There's only three or four of them, and they're very easily identified. And if necessary, we can provide them with a document that says that they're a landowner that needs access. Enforcement is a different issue, but I think I have a, I think I have a solution to that. But I just, I don't want to mention it until I see the staff report on the first one. Now, regarding the ATV club, there was a, remember the ATV club here, the president was here. Regarding the ATV club, there was a member of the ATV club here, the president was here. When Hans made their presentation, HFI made their presentation. There's a long discussion that took place outside after the after the meeting. The ATV club's in a very awkward spot because they don't feel that they can use the rail bed. And and they feel that there's a lease arrangement in place where CP has leased the rail bed. To the Grenville Snowmobile Club. Now, the Snowmobile Club and the ATV Club are trying to come to some arrangements. Where where the ATV Club uses it for 10 months of the year and the Snowmobile Club uses it for the the two or three winter months. They're trying to come to that arrangement, but the lease, as it's written right now, I am told, and I haven't seen the lease, I'm trying to get a copy of it. The lease is with the the north. The Kemphill Snowmobile Club and the Grenville Snowmobile Club. The Kemphill Snowmobile Club is a very active club with sixty, over sixty members, I'm told. The Grenville ATV Club is on very shaky ground. It barely has an executive left. So I think you have to work with these two to see if there's some way we can accommodate that ATV club. The problem with the ATV club is this, it gets even more complicated. They they originated in Johnstown. They come north on the east side of 416 and they go under the tunnel. Then, as they come under the tunnel, they swing to their right and they come north along. The west side of 416 as far as Hans Road. And they used to go across Hans Road and right straight up to Glen's Mail Road. But to do so, they have to cross three properties. The first one is owned by MTO. The second one is owned by a private individual in Cornwall. Who's given them right across his land. And the third piece of property before they get to Glen's Mail Road is owned by MTO. They used to be able to use the MTO property across across all three. And suddenly MTO, for some strange reason that I don't understand, said, no, you can't, you can't use MTO property. You can go under the tunnel, but you can't go a- a- across our piece of property. I I have to get that one sorted out. So the long and the short of it is, is that they come north as far as Hans Road. Then they have to scoop west along Hans Road and scoop they do. Right past the entrance to HFI, to the corner where they turn the corner and go north on Glen's Mail. As far as, I think it's called Patterson Road. So there's, there's three, um, there's three entities here that have to be satisfied. The ATV Club, HFI, and the property owners. And I think we can find a way to satisfy them all, but it's going to take time. And it is going to involve, it is going to involve, I believe, it's going to involve some kind of closure of that road. Beyond the Hans HFI property. With only people going beyond that point are going to have to be property owners. And we'll have to find a way to accommodate the ATV club. I don't know how. I don't see that light at the end of the tunnel yet. I'm sure there must be. This is very, I don't have to tell you, this is very political. Because Department of National Defense is watching us very closely. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Bill, you want to follow up?
Uh, yeah, I guess I would continue on like we have HFI to to, you know, keep them. Uh happy and then we have the TV, but we also have the snowmobile. Uh that road is used a lot by snowmobiles. Not just. So, you know, you can, you can all save with the TV with the snowmobile, uh go down there too. And as far as administrative, uh National Defense, I don't, you know, maybe they are watching, but. How do they, I mean, we go up, you go up to Pedawawa on Highway seventeen. And they got four-wheelers going up to there and they have big signs and. That it's a lot bigger than HFI is. And I, you know, I've never heard any problems or issues. With something like that, that's and and I disagree, you know. I disagree that we should close that road.
Okay, um, I'm going to move on now, so I'll just, my my final comment would be to to staff. CEO and Director of Operations that you've heard, that you've heard some of the concerns around the table and you can hopefully be a little more equipped to meet them. Okay, we're going on now to the action information items and we're now at number seven. And seven A, which is the County Road Two Unopened Road. Allowance closure request from Mr. Mr. Mallon. Uh you have your briefing package in front of you. You had a chance to to go through the briefing package. It's on pages eighteen to twenty-one and there is a recommendation and. I will open the floor up for questions and concerns. I'll start with Mr. Bush.
I think the policy of operations, I think it it talks about as long as you're not blocking someone. Right? As long as you're not blocking someone's land access, then it seems like something that can be done. So I'm I'm open to that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Packwood.
Same. Great.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bill.
I I just have a concern if it's third street, I wish we had a little bit longer map. I think we've had a discussion here about. Edison Drive, if we ever want to get over on Frederick Street. Make that loop. On, I think it's nice. And. If we can keep going side then on the property of 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 Port Jost, make that road. Pass them. I don't have, you know, I know you have a problem up there. As long as we can continue on to get over to Frederick, if we ever have to make that loop to take vehicles, transports off the main highway. So that's that's my only concern. It's only Third Street. Well, I I think it's nice to, can you, can you help me out on that, Mr. CEO? That we're talking about that loop. It can come out of Frederick Street on the property of. The commercial property. Was it nice that it could come in?
Yeah, through 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 the chair, I I'd have to confirm that.
That's all. Yeah, that that was my own concern. That's okay. I'm fine.
Okay, thank, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just making sure that the pins are accurate with the ask, so.
The recommendation with my error, you you would need to add in six eight one five five dash zero two three two.
Yeah, after two three two, right?
That is correct.
So once, once that pin's added to that. Yeah, yeah. So once that, once that pin's added, I'm happy to use the recommendation. Uh with the addition of of that pin number.
What's your pin number again, please?
Through the chair, that is six eight one five five dash zero two three two. Up to.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm good. Yeah.
So yeah, with that, I'll I'm happy to move.
Okay, uh, just to add a second. Counselor Hunter.
The pin number you're referring to is the next block of land up between second and third?
Yes.
As well.
Yeah, they own the land.
That is correct. On on page twenty-one and fifty-one. I did not go far north, you know, north in in the orange line. So. On break. On page twenty of uh fifty-one, I said that first. Unopened road allowance is actually Second Street. Questions, Mr. Chair?
The two. Roads ran ran east and west. There, first and Second Street. This road's closed there. What's the purpose of them being?
Um with respect to Second Street. I I would say the the only reason you would have that open necessarily would be. For eighteen Virchell Street to have side access. But there's not, there's not a great need to to have that. Open.
Other than to give. That's basically blocked from the township property. Once this road's closed up as far as Third Street, we have no access into any of these. East-west roads that exit that property in the future.
I believe the township owns owns all property. To the to the west. Township of the port. Well, yes, correct, yes.
I just don't have, I don't have a problem with the fact that we don't know what development's going to take there or place there. There is a need to have an access road to the Virchell Street. It's closed and we're locked off.
But I think we can walk above for the eighth and ninth, that's easily.
Yeah, I mean, through the chair, so so like Fourth Street, Fifth Street, those those east-west streets, that to best of my knowledge are just unopened. Which is we we just be that Virchell Street would need to be extended, so to speak.
And we don't know that property at all.
Um, we 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 own the. Yeah, yes, but no, we don't.
This is the only property that if any development takes place, you might need to, rather than coming all the way back out to the front, you might need to be able to access over to Virchell Street. Right. I had no problem closing the street, but I think the. First and Second Street and Third Street. First and Second, especially in the access from then across that road. Up top, we should remain. We have the right to cross.
Yeah, so if I, if I may on page twenty-one, if we if we encompass. Pin sixty-eight one five zero two three two, that would go up to Third Street, but Third Street is a. It's a different pin number. It's it's been sixty-one five five dash zero one. So Third Street remains open. So Third Street would would read, yes, it's it's not open, but but it is an instrument's access.
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, have you had your hand up?
Well, yes, I think we don't overlook the other points that were made by Mr. Mallon in his presentation. I mean. That this solves a lot of problems, most most important of which is the fact that. And that there's infringement on that unopened road allowance, which he was unaware of at the point of purchase. And this solves that problem as well. I think there's a a number of wins here for everybody. Things up a lot, that's right.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, we have a, we have a recommendation. And as it stands, the recommendation reads that committee recommends that council agree to stop up and close. The unopened road allowances identified as pin numbers. And then there's going to be an addition of the two-three-two pin number. In there after the twelve one oh five. Am I, am I correct, Mr. CEO?
No, it'll be before that.
Or before that. Correct. Okay, okay. So, yes, correct. Okay, and then we'll just continue on. After that insert has been made and that the land be conveyed to the owner of.
Twenty-eight fourteen.
Sorry, sorry. Nope, I got it. Uh twenty-eight fourteen County Road Two, in accordance with the municipal act. Section thirty-five and that the intended conveyance be publicized through the township's website and local newspaper. I have a mover and I have a second here. I'm going to call a question. All in favor of the recommendation?
Right.
Carrie, thank you so much. Any, any questions, Mr. Mallon?
No, no, we're, everything is fine.
Okay, just bear with me for a moment till I find out where we are here. Now we're on seven B, which is the drainage projects, wine items. Renegotiations. Now, in your packages, I do believe they start on page twenty-two and end on thirty-one. Define, define, so you can. Yes, Mr. Chair, yes, it would start on page twenty-two and back there in the equation that we might have been in finance and it would. Conclude on page thirty of fifty-one. Just just for your information, Mr. Chair, we asked Mr. Kevin Ollie from Green Hallway Group to 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 attend tonight. And just to insist with the questions and is he is here in the in the gallery. Okay, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Ollie. Okay, so on pages twenty-two and twenty-three. There, that that this is just a report from staff. Regarding a request that was made. At the Admin Reinance, I believe it was. And yes, that may I, may I pleading. And staff have come back to us with. Suggestions of going away from sod to hydro seed to save a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Also remove a one-fifty millimeter grain under the curb. Which may save a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the total savings would be two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which. When you look at the scope of the million dollar overage, it's it's really not a lot of money. Anyway, uh, committee, you've had, you've had a chance to read the briefing notes and. There is a recommendation. On. So I will. I will open it up to comments or questions and I'll start with Counselor Hunter.
I don't think that a fucking come up with. I suggested last time, so we met with the bank, but I can throw more than this from dimes, but. Where they came up with of actually saving. Any money. People like sod, I don't, I put it down, I I had far better luck with hydro seed than I ever did sod. Coming up, especially in the construction area. But as far as. Taking away those drainage line guy, if that's a bad mistake, engineer didn't really recommend it either, so. I don't think save, that's gonna. Save any, we're told we're not going to save any money by closing streets if they're generally closed. Profit anyways, that's not going to save any money, so. I I could go along with. Giving away with the sod and going to hydro seed, personally, I think hydro seed is a better way to do it. Giving away the sod and going to hydro seed, personally, I can see a better way to it in the first place, so. Maybe down the road, though, we've been doing this couple of years, so, well, three years ago, right, in the dry, part of the year, and the hydro seed. The lawn being a moment grass, we can have later, so I'm just amazed how. Come, I know we had some problems in a couple of spots in, in Cardinal, but I didn't want to whatever. The fall was one, hydro seed, or the fall was one, the hydro seed was done on. So sod's gonna be saying, you put sod down, down, if it's a dry summer and you don't water, it's not gonna live either, because sod needs a lot of water on it to keep it. Hydro seed is a part, okay, say, part of it, I don't take for safe anything, so. As far as top and left project in Johnstown. We got, spend a little more money, money on borrow, borrow and cost, but I think we're gonna spend a lot more when you do it. Next council comes in to do that on the street the next year, so I turn to see.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I'll go along with Council for a hundred, it's a hundred and twenty thousand. It's a small amount in this whole school of things, but I'll go around along with saving that hundred and twenty. And I agree with Council on that, I think hydro seeding does, it can be a lot more successful inside than, I know homeowners don't look after the sod the way they. They, it needs lots of water, let's put it that way. So as far as the overall scope of the thing. I'd like to see it done, but I can't, I, I, I'm just having a hard time swallowing this over, it's not, I'm having a hard time conceiving of what the financing package is going to be. So as far as the scope goes, I'd like to hear what the rest of the county members have to say about the scope. Heavily influenced by Councilor Hunter's comment that says. We wait, supply a street's only going to be more expensive in the future, but. I just do not understand how these numbers are so far out of whack, away from the budget. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. Unlike the previous two speakers, having heard the considerable amount of complaints on Walker Street and it seemed to drag on and on and on and on. I certainly don't want to handcuff the next council with those complaints. So I'm in favor of leaving that in the budget as well as the drainage underneath, it's. Engineers recommend it as best practice, it's good. As for the scope of the project, again, handcuffing the next council's death load and decision-making process and not that in favor of. So I wouldn't be in favor of the full scope for Johnstown, just the partial scope, so. The recommendation as it's written, not the, not the alternative, so.
Thank you, Councilor.
Yes, in, in the savings there, when it says Johnstown seventy thousand and, and the river of the hundred and fifty drain, obviously we've got a consent that we don't really want to go that route. But it's not, Johnstown, hundred and forty-five thousand dollar savings is up. Uh, kicking consideration Mary Street and Sophia, or just Mary?
Through, through the chair, I'll confirm that, I blame it is for both, it is for both Mary and Sophia.
Okay, that's savings of a hundred.
Correct. Uh, Mr. Packard.
I, well.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
I, I'm into agreement with the Council on that, I like to see it done, Spencerville and Sophia and Mary. I don't think Sophia would say we're not doing it today, Sophia won't pick that in four years. And that I do, and I look to House down for us, I'd kind of like to see. So I still like to see.
So are you in favor of the recommendation or not?
No, no.
I just, I just want to get that clear. Mr. Packard.
Through the chair, I go with the hydro seed for sure. And, but there should be a provision in the tender to water the stuff. Because sometimes you get a real dry summer, there has to be something done, some homeowner won't do anything. Secondly. I think it's foolish to take those submarines out of those roads for the simple reason, we don't know what's under there for somebody. And in a lot of cases, what they did is take the ditch, put it out, then put some ground all about. So I think that's foolish to take those out. But I also agree that we should use the whole tender with Johnstown.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
In favor of the hydro seed. Just the reduced scope for Johnstown. For now, prices are just so volatile right now with fuel and supplies, even any. Any supply, any material, just going right now, so. So we can maybe hope that it'll bounce back and go be more supply available.
So you would support the recommendation as it's written?
Yes.
Well, we've been around the table. I also, Eric. Deputy Mayor DeSham's concerns regarding Walker Street with the hybrid sitting there, but. I do, I do understand that sod. Could possibly be the better way to build, but. I'm kind, I'm leaning, personally, I'm leaning towards going with hydro seeding. This time. I have a feeling with Walker Street, the watering wasn't, was the problem and it wasn't, it wasn't watered properly. And I think we do have to have a, a codicil that. The hydro seeding company or the, or, or the. The winner of the gender, do the, do the watering. It's gotta, it's gotta, if we put hydro seed down our side, it's gotta be one, one way or the other, so watering is, is, is a must, so. And I'm also for doing the whole thing, not, not skip it.
So, Mr. Chairman, how, how do I read this? Hydro seeding interim.
Hydro seeding wins.
I think hydro seeding wins.
That guy was the only sound guy.
Yeah, I think you are.
And the drain stays.
Drain stays.
Drain stays.
Okay.
And the complete work.
I think it's four, three. You may want to hold it again, but I think I'd like to.
Okay, I, I am going to follow the, the table again, for the complete work, Councilor Hunter? Deputy Mayor, or Mayor, say.
Maybe.
CIO wants to speak.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. It, it would mostly. I would suggest proceeding with a mover and a second here for one of the recommendations or the other. Have your, some additional discussion around that. I would say that the only change that we've certainly heard is that we would like it to be moved from sod to hydros. But otherwise, I think it's just a matter of having a newer and second for either the original staff recommendation or the. Alternative recommendation, which would be.
Well, the recommendation is for hospital.
Yes, the staff recommendation is, is the, with, for, for sort of half, half Johnstown. The alternative recommendation would be full scope Johnstown, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Just, just that.
Uh, okay, is that, are you finished with that? Yes, I just didn't want to cut you off. Thank you.
Want to get first into the recommendation. So I think I'm going to lose this one. So I'll move the recommendation as the recommendation is, is written, not the alternative recommendation, I will move the recommendation, I'll see you soon.
Does Deputy Mayor has made a move, a motion, does he have a second? Mr. Bush, Mr. Bush, thank you. I'm going to call the question, all in favor? I have a feeling you've been defeated. Now, could I have a mover for the recommendation? For the full, for the full scope?
I make a, a recommendation that the full scope of Spencerville and Johnstown, Mary Street and Sophia.
That's the alternative, Mr. Chairman.
That is, that is the alternative, the, the.
Hydro seed's fine with me.
Hydro seed is fine. Okay, I have a mover and I have a second here.
Can you read the alternate recommendation so that everyone knows exactly what it is?
Sure, certainly.
Sorry.
Let me try and figure this out. That committee recommends that council, one, award the Spencerville tender to cocoa paving. Oh, I'm sorry.
If you want the alternative.
You're right, the alternative recommend, recommendation reads, consider.
That council recommends.
That council recommends. Sorry, just having trouble here. Consider. We're going to take it into consideration, not. Mr. Chair, if, if I may. Yes. Maybe I can give it a, a shot. A college try? A college try? Thank you. So the committee recommends that council, one, award the Spencerville tender bid to Cocoa Paving Incorporated for a total of. One million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-two cents, plus ten percent contingency. And award cocoa paving, the full scope tender bid for Johnstown. Sorry, for, for a total of. One million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents, plus ten percent contingency. Total of both projects would be three million, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents, including non-revated HST. And award contract administration to, to Bear Galloway Group to an upset. My apologies, I did not. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Before the, before the speaker finishes, before the CIO spending finishes.
Yes.
Because he, he's going to add the, the contract administration. I, I'd prefer to see that contract administration dealt with separate from this motion as, as he's read it so far. And deal with the contract administration in a, in a separate motion.
Are you okay with that, Mr. CIO? Certainly, so I guess I would conclude. Including non-revated HST with substituting hydro seed instead of sod as part of the project.
Okay, and what's the total? Mr. CIO?
The total would be three million, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Less, less, the hydro.
Less.
Okay, yeah.
Now, does that, Deputy United, that answer your, your concern about?
Yeah, I just wanted the recommendation, yeah.
Okay.
You're like, um, tied down, yeah, is that the alternate on the side?
Okay, okay, so Mr. CIO has read the recommendations, we do have a mover, we do have a second here.
We do.
Okay, I want to comment.
Yeah, and I'm now going to call the question.
I want to comment before I do. Go ahead, okay, as pointed out, and I think it's worth noting, that we are, you know, approving three point six nine seven, so basically three point seven million dollars in drainage work between Johnstown and Spencerville. And I want to make sure that in that alternative recommendation, it is noted that it is one million. Fifty-five thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-seven cents over budget. And that, that we are going that much over, over what we had.
Do you, will you capture that, Mr. CIO? Mr. Chair, I believe, I, I believe we clearly, we clearly captured that. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're now back to the, to the mover and the second here, which we do have.
I'm going to comment too. For the record, my name to be included in the minutes. Please. I also want to note that this award is for a project which is one million, fifty-five thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars over budget. Less than a hundred and one. I also want to note that we are, if this recommendation passes, we're passing it without a financing package. And our budget has been struck. So I'm going to have a difficult time supporting, as much as I'd like to see the whole project done, I'm going to have a difficult time supporting the motion that's on the floor. But I think that there's probably reasons to do it, so between now and the time the vote is called, I have to get off the fence, and I know that. But I want my reservations noted.
Thank you, anything else? I am now going to call the question, all in favor? Carrie.
I'll go too.
Carrie. Thank you. Any, oh, any opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed.
And Mr. Bush. Two opposed, Mr. Bush, and that's Deputy Mayor, thank you. Okay, we're now moving on.
Mr. Chairman, just before the move, several drawn was mentioned by, by our mayor, we don't have a finance package for this, now that the motion's been passed here, it's just many motions, it's got to come before it comes with the.
That is correct.
The past. Doesn't have a lot of time, but it's pretty new to their CEO. I'm sure the staff has been looking at this since it come in. Are we going to have a recommendation of a finance package that we have?
Through, through, through the chair, we will do our best effort to have that for the, for the meeting.
Thank you, um, just, oh, I mean, yes, we're a million dollars over budget. Our last meeting at the port, though, Johnstown, we have six million dollars sitting in the current investments. So we do have money that we can borrow. That one million to offset of even going to the bank.
Death is death.
Sorry?
Death is death.
But we, we have six million dollars tax rate money sitting as an investment, that's all I'm saying.
We do have a way, yeah?
Yeah. You don't have a way of, through the chair, Mr. Chairman, and I don't want to get into discussing a, a, a hypothetical finance package that we don't have in front of us, but doesn't matter how you cut the cake. I mean, if, if, if the previous speaker is suggesting that we, that we scoop a million dollars from the port of Johnstown, I'm going to have a real problem. If we borrow a million dollars from the port of Johnstown, still has to be paid back, paid back, dead is dead.
Absolutely.
And, and why would you borrow from the port of Johnstown? Well, we could borrow it from our own reserve account as far as that goes, but, I mean, what rate, what rate do you charge yourself or do you charge yourself any rate? And, and of course, we'd always say that, well, again, I don't want to get into the discussion of the financing package, because I haven't. And, and of course, we'd always say that, well, again, I don't want to get into the discussion of the financing package because I haven't. I'd like to see a package.
Do you think we need to leave that staff for?
Well, I, I, you know what? I don't agree with you, Councilor Hunter, because we're the guys that are going to sit at the table and are going to vote on it. So I think we have a lot of in, should have a lot of input into what that financing package looks like. And it's not going to be staff that's standing up in front of the, in front of the electorate in the next few months justifying what they, what decision we've made. So I think it's, I think the elected people have something to say about the financing package.
I think definitely they would have the approval of it.
Well, I think we have something to do with the shape.
But two different shapes of it together put in the forest.
Well, you know, the shapes that I've seen so far, well, again, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't want to get going here, but. Several different alternatives.
I thi- I think we're going to end the conversation.
I think before we, before we end it, if that's possible, I mean, hearing all finance options, including, including borrowing from ourselves, I think is, is an important thing. You just heard two council members say that they think it's viable, and you heard one that says that, that they didn't. You haven't weighed in. And I certainly think, you know, when the port's sitting on six million dollars earning point six percent interest, that, you know, borrowing from them instead of five percent from the Royal Bank would, would be a smart thing, so seeing not seeing that come forward as a viable option for us, I'd be very disappointed.
Well, the op- the option should come forward when we're discussing the package.
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
And so that's why I want to move on tonight.
We tried to get us home before it.
Okay, so, that puts that one, that puts that one, we're now going to move on.
Briefly.
There's one issue outstanding, and that's the. That's the rear Galloway administration. Oh, yeah, for sure. And before that motion comes forward, Mr. Chairman, I have, I have a bit of problem with the, with the amount. And I'm just, because I don't have the numbers in front of me, I'd like to ask a couple of questions through the chair, if I may, just before we get to that. This note that I have in front of me, the different notes that I have in front of me, which was, and I'm just reading the last sentence of the original recommendation from staff, which was award the Contract Administration to rear Galloway to an upset limit of one fourteen. So through the chair to the CIO, was that one fourteen, six ninety-eight? Was that the original administration amount, or was that some, is that a, a different amount that's tied to the, tied to the value of the project? I, I just can't remember where that number came from.
So through, through, through the chair, that is tied to the low tender bid.
Tied to the low tender bid, not tied to the budgeted amount?
I believe that is correct.
Well, carrying on, Mr. Chairman, I would like to see the, the administration amount tied to the budget amount. Rather than a percentage of the final award. What percentage of, Chair, if I may, Mr. Chairman, what percentage of the final order, how is it calculated?
Through, through the chair, if we turn to page twenty-six of fifty-one?
That's where I am.
Okay, so it is based on five percent. For Spencerville, five percent of the little bit, it was the sixty-four, eight-two-four. If you went five percent on the budget amount, it would be fifty-nine, eight oh, eight oh five.
Fifty-nine, eight oh five? And how does that work out for Johnstown?
Seventy-two, eight, or seventy-two, two eight two.
Seventy-two, two eight two, so adding those two, Mr. Chairman, I would get twelve, twelve, I would get one thirty-two, zero eighty-seven. How can it be higher than, than the one fourteen? Sorry, sorry, what was that?
Because it's on the full scope.
It's on the full scope.
Oh, right, sorry, yeah, 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 sorry.
Maybe you should move the, maybe you should move the one fourteen.
Yeah. You put the both forward.
Councilor Hunter?
Well. Well, in my opinion, you know, percentage is what we're dealing with, contracts or purchase contracts. I don't believe, just because the project comes in a million dollars, then all of a sudden you pay five percent more of the million dollars. Very same scope of work for this budget in the first place, so. I think we need to begin a negotiation here about paying for this. I believe we're paying, paying for the scope of work being not done, not just a percentage of it, but. You know, I'm lucky to get a million dollars every budget taken, but all of a sudden, suddenly I pay an extra fifty thousand dollars.
Administration?
Administration fees, and it's the very same amount of work.
Thank you very much, Councilor Hunter.
Good point.
Okay, the chair's looking for some direction here.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think both Councilor Hunter and I are saying the same thing, five percent of the original budget amount.
Okay. And is that in the form of a recommendation?
I make that movement, motion. Okay.
If I could, Mr. Chair, understanding correctly, that we have a mover and a second to award the Contract Administration to your to rear Galloway to an upset limit of one hundred and thirty-two thousand, eighty-seven dollars.
Well, I know that's, that's not the way I'm reading the numbers, but. I asked where the one fifty, one fourteen came from, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, sir, I asked where the one fourteen came from, and I was told that it was five percent. I thought I was told that it was five percent of the award.
Was that on the partial scope? So through, so, so through the chair?
Oh, yeah, on the partial scope, correct.
So one, the one thirty-two, oh eighty-seven, is correct for the full scope?
Is the full scope based on the twenty-two question?
Right, between twenty-two and twenty-one.
Correct. Well, okay, so I'll go back. What was the budgeted amount? I, I said the total budgeted amount at two point six four one. Is that, is that correct, original budget? One six four one, that doesn't even look correct. There's a whole mess of numbers here that are not, I can't, I can't get them all together.
So the total budget for the entire project for both was two million, six hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars.
And what's five percent of that number?
One thirty-two, zero eight seven. Thirty-two thousand and eighty-seven dollars.
Well, then in that case, I'm going with the one fourteen. That wasn't in the, that wasn't in the recommendation.
Through the chair, if I may, to see, so, so the five percent number I found right in my math is one thirty-two, eighty-seven, fifty-five. Hundred and thirty-two thousand, eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents.
So, yes.
Did we have a move on a second?
I'm not sure. Did we have a mover and a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'm the guy with the both, I'll move it.
So are you moving the one thirty-two or the one fourteen?
I mean, that's only fair.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're finally at a second.
All seconded, I don't care, I'm fine with that.
I have a mover with Mayor Seale, do I have a second? Okay, second with Councilor Hunter, I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Yes.
All right, Carrie? Okay, that takes care of that. Now we can move on. It is, we're, we're, we may be at a. Okay, the next one is the Spencerville Lagoon, which is seven C District Report. Does have a recommendation with it. And Mr. Shaw, are you going to highlight this for us?
Sir, Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
This is regarding the twenty-two Spencerville Lagoon discharge report. Basically, the purpose to receive and review the Spencerville District Report and submit to the MECP prior to June thirty. Yeah, the Lagoon was discharged between April eleventh and April twenty-first. The typical analysis is between March fifteenth and April twenty-first, again, this year. Late start due to thick ice in the lagoons, and so we had to, that's pretty much the end. We ended up with an eleven-day discharge period to come to two lagoons, approximately seventy-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine cubic meters of the discharge. Report is attached for council review. Recommendation that committee recommends that council receive and review the twenty-two Lagoon discharge report and direct staff who submit report to MECP prior to June thirty of due date.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. You've had a chance to read the briefing note and the, and the report. Any questions or concerns?
Just one real quick one, and it's more of a curiosity than anything, so reading through the reports for the, or, sorry, Mr. Shaw, the the decline after pumping was fifty point five, five inches or roughly fifty point five inches, this strictly curiosity on my part. How much effect does, say, like, dry weather in summer have on that? Do we keep that? It's just, like I said, it's just curiosity, it's quite a decline, fifty inches that we pumped over the winter, but, like rainfall versus, versus evaporation.
Through the chair, through the Deputy Mayor, those things are true factors that help in the Lagoon, but very difficult to calculate. So when extraneous flows through rain and so forth, will raise the levels in a hot summer, will definitely bring it down. Drive past them, some could notice almost a drop or algae buildup, stuff like that through the summer when high evaporation's taking place. But the measurement with the inch is, is the amount of inches that not put into a formula to calculate the, the amount of that per inch, and that's reported on state.
Okay, but just, just curiosity and reading through, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you had your hand up?
Yes, and, and I'm, I'm curious as well, and so I, I'm going to be pleased to move the recommendation, Mr. Chairman, but I did have a question through the chair to Mr. Shaw, and I, I'd just like to help him, have him help me understand that at least one of these inspection reports or sample reports, so I'm just picking an arbitrary one on page forty-one of fifty-one. And this is a certificate of analysis, so RL is the reporting limit. Now, what does reporting limit mean in this particular chart that I've got in front of me?
Sheriff to the mayor, the RL's a reportable limit, so it's basically the, the minimum amount that's, that's registered in the test.
So three what?
Three milligrams per liter.
Three milligrams per liter?
Yeah.
Oh, so that's, that's the reporting limit, so now just help me go down the, the chart here. Total suspended solids is four milligrams per liter. And then, what's less than three?
Through the chair to the mayor, often tied in reporting, they will not put zero, because, because of the lower limit, they, they can't say, they may register zero when the reportable limit was three, the minimal reportable limit, so if it was, they typically put less than rather than zero, because zero's an absolute.
So upstream and downstream, the suspended solids were less than three. But when we put ours, our, when we let ours go, it registered four, is that correct?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, so now CBOD five, now that's what is CBOD five?
Carbonaceous biological oxygen demand, that's a federal parameter.
Okay, so it says three, but there's no comparables upstream and downstream?
It's, it's not something that provincial does, it's something that we do for, for the federal government.
Okay, and then BOD?
Biological oxygen demand.
Okay, now, so upstream and downstream, it was less than three, but our affluent was five. So do we have a standard that we have to meet to, to, in relation to what was happening on upstream and downstream?
It's, it's a comparator, if you go to the actual top of the, the Lagoon discharge table on page thirty-five of fifty-one, you can see at the bottom, it has compliances, and those are the levels that are set by the MECP. So those are the parameters for each of them, at the very bottom, compliance for sample BOD, twenty, uh, BOD is twenty-five milligrams per liter.
Okay, so in other words, to understand, page forty-one, I got it, I got it, cross records back to thirty-five.
Yeah, actually, page thirty-five lists all the samples.
Right.
So that's just the actual report from the lab that.
I got it.
Also, the summary is in, in that page, thirty-five is the total summary, each one of the cells, we can only discharge one cell at a time.
Yep.
Because we can't direct sewage streaming through a cell, so they switch from one to the other, do one, one cell and then switch to the other.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I, I understand this now.
Councilor Hunter?
I just have one, one question to the chair to, or just to the chair to ask you, once we're lower those fifty-five inches, how much do we leave as a base in the cell, how long do we pump?
Through the chair to Councilor Hunter, there's actually a plate at the discharge structure, a steel plate, and that's to allow just affluent to go, so basically it doesn't drop the whole Lagoon out, it'll only go to the level of that gate.
Yeah, I know, I've seen that, I get me, but, but, yeah, for those of affluent who's left in the cells all the time.
Through the chair, I can't really answer that, it would be depending on the sledge layer and so forth, three to six inches.
So how, how long have those, we've never had to clean that sledge over there yet, how long? Some of my slugs ask between there and themselves.
Through the chair, Councilor. Yeah, we're actually looking at this year having a survey done, so basically they woke with a little radar unit that, oh, that'll measure the depth of the sledge, the various areas of calculations, if we need to.
Okay, Mr. Councilor, do you have any questions? And Mr. Bush? Okay, we have a mover. Did we get a second, Councilor Hunter? Thank you, I'm going to move the, move the question, the recommendation, which Mr. Shaw has pointed out. This is a, a review. This is a, a review and submit staff to submit the report to the MECP prior to June thirtieth. All in favor? Thank you, Carrie. And this brings us to Front Street Real Crossing, which is on page forty-nine. This is an information package, a briefing note only. And Mr. Shaw, will you be highlighting this?
Certainly, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So, sound just been notified by the National Railroad that Front Street Level Crossing has been identified for a required rehabilitation this year. So scheduled for June twenty-first through June twenty-third inclusive. The maintenance work is is gonna require that the crossing be closed from during nine o'clock PM to two AM on two of the nights. And just to facilitate the work of the tracks and while leaving one, one set of tracks over for regular rail travel. A crew will remain on on site, so they emergency crossing or emergency service should be required, minimal possible tonight. Staff, several letter on equal force to affect property owners. Skills provided by CNR, and we will follow up with a reminder.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any, any questions for Mr. Shaw?
Just have to be mayor going, just one through you, Mr. Shaw, was there any, for those two letters, was there any feedback from the residents at all?
Through the chair, Deputy Mayor, no, we did not receive any.
Anything, anything else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Shaw, I'm going to move on now. And Mr. Spencer, you've been sitting here very patiently, all, all evening, and unfortunately, the luck of the dog is that we were seventy and.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll just, it's a, just a brief recap. Our record meter, our basic water, worked with a number of groups and organizations, just indicating the both schools, the one here in Spencerville and in Johnstown, worked on pitch up or pitching cleanup week in the various areas around their schools and yards. Ingridi on employees also spent time through the, that week, throughout the village of Cardinal, working in a number of areas, helping clean up. Johnstown ATV Club did a tremendous job on the rails, trails, and also on a couple of the side roads, McDavid and England. And that stuff was taken, there was two trailer folds that we took off, really, it feels like, on that final Saturday, so. And then there was approximately fifteen residents that had reached out to the township and asked for bags and gloves, and delivered those to those residents. And then followed up the following, the, the stuff that they had collected along their roadside and nature. So, and then this, this weekend coming, the September Riverback Association has a Johnstown cleanup day as well, and we have bags and gloves that will be supplying to them this Thursday. Overall, quite a bit of garbage was collected, and any bit of garbage is better than having to sit on the side road. So, well done by everybody, special thanks to everyone that volunteered to work.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Spencer, the good community involvement up there. Questions for Mr. Spencer? Mr. Don?
Just a comment, South End Public School did an excellent job on our streets, unbelievable. Young kids, very busy, it's too bad we have to do that.
Mr. Bush, anything for Mr. Spencer? Mr. Packwood?
I just one comment, I noticed there was a lady on Glen's Vale, I think, west of the the railway right away, she cleaned out a pile of garbage out of there, and it was unbelievable, we cleaned up the garbage shop.
And there was seven or eighteen.
Yeah, on both sides, it was terrible, yeah.
Deputy Mayor? Yeah, I I echo the committee's comments. I think it's, it's unfortunate that we have as much garbage to clean up in the ditches as as we do, but well done to industry, to the many clubs that are here, and all the residents that continue to work for this yearly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Counselor Hunter?
There might be a staff, lots of friends, even an organization, they have to step out and end it, but they do. They're thirty or nine, they're, we love it, we're getting with sixty-seven, we are working with the kids, going up, going up, they had a a great day with the kids, we spent one afternoon, crews picked up around Spencerville area, and they got all job cleaning up the streets around Spencerville area, and then they got three, three boxes, we wanted to move there. Everything was available to them.
Good, thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Hunter, or Counselor Hunter, and once again, thanks, thank you, your report, Mr. Spencer. Moving on, counseling inquiries are always in motion. Do you have any to mention? Hearing none, thank you. And that brings us to number nine, which is the Mary's report.
No report tonight, Mr. Chairman.
No report tonight, thank you so much. That brings us to, brings us to question period, and we have Mr. and Mrs. Ballin in the, in in the gallery tonight. Any questions you have? Okay, thank, thank, thank you so much. Now, we have no close session. Can I have a, can I have a mover or adjournment, please? Mr. Packwood, second is by Deputy Mayor DeShia. And nine twenty-three. For adjournment, all in favor? Thank you, all, your adjournment.
I hope all the councilors got, made your notice there that we're successful in getting a fish count of seventeen, eighteen.
I didn't see that, so.